Hello and welcome to Channel 17's Town Meeting Television. I'm Matt Kelly, your host for tonight's show as we continue our live candidate forums for Burlington School Board. Joining me this evening are our incumbents Susan Marie Harrington, Mike Fisher as a challenger, and Nicole Tuig, also challenger for this position. Our forum this evening is going to follow a very specific format. Each candidate will be given two minutes to answer a question. The questions have been provided to the candidates beforehand. Candidates will have an opportunity for rebuttal if they like. However, we will continue if they do not. I want to welcome all the candidates here this evening and thank you very much for your willingness to serve the city of Burlington. At this time, I'll ask Susan Marie Harrington, our incumbent, to have her opening statement, at which point it's an opportunity to discuss why she's running and what her qualifications are for the position.
Thank you, Matt, and thank you for hosting us. It has been an honor to represent Ward Five on the school board for the past three years. And I seek another term because of my experiences as an educator, a parent, and a citizen. There's nothing more important we do as a society than educate our youth. And there's also nothing more complicated we do as a society than to educate our youth. A school board has to juggle competing needs, a diverse community, and both create and inspire a district that serves our city collectively and works well for individuals. That's a tall order. But I think my experience qualifies me for this work. I've been a teacher and administrator for over 25 years. I've been involved with youth mentoring organizations my entire adult life. I have a collaborative working style. I'm persistent. I pay attention to detail. And I'm a policy wonk. I'm deeply interested in how institutions work and how they can improve. So during my time on the school board, I've worked hard to keep the board focused on work that matters. Navigating the very real financial constraints in ways that let us continue to support every student and get us on track to closing achievement gaps. To support our talented teachers in ways that encourage us all to work together, to create financial stability for the district, and to keep finances sustainable for everyone. This hasn't been easy or conflict-free, and there are relationships that need repairing. As an educator from a family of educators, I value teachers. As a parent, I'm grateful for teachers. And as a commissioner, I admire teachers' fierce dedication to their work. The board and the BEA need each other, and we need to act together out of our common commitments. I've been working hard to lay the groundwork for this. And there are other relationships that also need repairing and rebuilding. We don't all have the same experiences with or in schools, and the hurt and frustration that comes from inequity is real. The board's focus on equity and inclusion aims to rebuild every family's relationship with schools in our district. Inequitable discipline rates, social exclusion of students with disabilities, differential academic outcomes largely predictable by students' family, income, race, or participation in special education are challenges to everyone, and they need fixing. So how do we do that? Together. By being willing to have hard conversations, by being willing to listen and learn from each other. We need teachers and staff and their expertise, parent enthusiasm, board vision, and community support for inclusively moving forward with empathy and compassion.
Very good. Thank you, Susan Marie. Mike, it's your turn for your opening statement again to present your qualifications and your reason for running.
Thank you, Matt. Good afternoon. My name is Mike Fisher. I have two daughters at Edmunds Middle School, and they came up through Champlain Elementary. And that's where I got involved with the PTO. So for about five years, I was on the board of the Champlain Elementary Parent Teacher Organization, including as president. I started to attend school board meetings to advocate on a regular basis on behalf of our school. And then I got involved at more of a district level, working with other PTO leaders. If elected, I will encourage the board and the district leadership to change in three major ways, and that's why I'm running. To treat parents and staff as partners in education, not as adversaries. Teachers are the point of delivery. They provide the services to our students, and the board cannot dictate change from behind a desk. They must engage the teachers as partners. Number two, citizens of Burlington, including parents and the students, should also be treated as partners. The board and the administrators do not have exclusive ownership of all the great ideas. The board should be active listeners and seek to engage the public. Third, the board should focus on strategy, and that's primary responsibility of the board, but should not abdicate oversight of operations. Neglecting to publicly take up operational issues, such as the resignations of two entire departments, gives the appearance of blanket support for the superintendent. On the contrary, the board should be providing the superintendent critical guidance. I'm going to accomplish this by three things: listening, questioning, and advocating. I'm going to listen to all the stakeholders. I'm going to listen to the teachers, to the staff, to the students, to the family, to the taxpayers. I'm also going to listen to other board members. And not just hearing, but really listening to what they're saying. And I'm going to listen to the data.
Our time.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Michael. You see, we do stick to quite a time schedule here. Two minutes, opening statements, and I will be calling the candidates at two minutes. Nicole Tuig, also running to replace Susan Marie. Your two minutes to state your position and why you're running.
Great, thanks, Matt, and thanks to Channel 17 for having us here. I'm running because I've always had a connection to education. My mom was a teacher. My dad's an immigrant who speaks three languages. So diversity and concept of honesty and hard work were instilled in me from an early age. Through my earliest work in development and fundraising in higher ed and to working on quality childcare issues in Vermont, and then for the past six years, working in school and campus safety issues at the national level for a leading safety and security firm and the National Center for Campus Public Safety, which is based here in Burlington, I've really been interested in the full and complete aspect of education and what public education means. I've learned of the impacts of cost of education on our children, how to build coalitions between a variety of partners, both public, private, and advocacy groups, what it means to transition between different administrations, most notably the Obama administration to the Trump administration, and how to work with federal and state laws like Title IX, FERPA, the Civil Rights Act, and more. I've also volunteered for the nonpartisan group that's based here in Burlington, Burlington Friends of Education, for nearly five years. And their work is solely for the purpose of ensuring that our school budget passes. I've lived here in Burlington since 1999. I have two children at Champlain Elementary School, one in kindergarten and one in fourth grade. And I'm basically all in. You know, I want to see this district succeed. I want to see the wounds healed that have, and the great divide sort of that's occurred now between the school board and the superintendent and the teachers and paraeducators and the other staff members in our district be healed because we really have this kind of toxic environment that has been established over the past several years taken hold. And I think we need to move in a direction that fixes that.
Very good. Just a reminder that this is a live call-in show, and if you have a comment for either of the candidates, we invite you to dial in and ask their question directly. That number to call is 862-3966. Again, 862-3966. Nicole, we'll stick with you here and go write down our questions here. Do you support the Burlington School District's fiscal 2019 budget and its priorities?
I do support the budget. It was an extremely difficult year for the Burlington School District, really given because of the pressures from Montpelier. I mean, we're increasing our budget by less than 1%. We're not nearly meeting the needs of the children in our district, and that's really because of the way the funding structure is set up from Montpelier. Unfortunately, I also have problems with the way our budget process is done here in Burlington. We don't really have a transparent process. I think if we, I acknowledge that we have a difficult timeframe from when we get information from the legislature, from when we get our common level of appraisal number. But I think we could have been better prepared. I know other districts and in other counties were better prepared than we were from when we were first getting numbers from the superintendent. Everything was painted as a very rosy picture up until about January. And I think it was a misstep. So I think we did our best. I think we're hopefully going to see a little bit of relief from what is actually going to be on the ballot because the most recent estimates are a revision downward from Montpelier from a 3.5% to a 2.5% increase from the education, the tax fund. So that's looking like a little bit of a positive trend. But, you know, I do support the budget. I do support the priorities that are in it. But I hope for a better process moving forward.
Very good. Thank you. Mike, we'll continue with you with that same question about the fiscal '19 budget for the school district. Do you support it and the priorities of the budget?
Thank you, Matt. Nicole, you mentioned the process, and part of the issue is that the process is forced on us. And the city of Burlington does not have a lot of say in how things come about in the order, and we have to live with that unless there's changes at the state. One thing I do appreciate about how the budget has been set this year and the prior year is that the superintendent led the board to set strategy. And the budget adheres to that strategy. So budgets are all about making choices about what to do with scarce resources. And I've been doing budgeting for a number of years, and there's always wants and needs. And somebody thinks that something is a need, and other people think it's a want. So there's always difficult choices. Having a strategy defined allows the board to say, does this need, does this want adhere to our strategy? And I do agree with most of the strategy that the board put forward, and so I do agree with most of the budget. I thought that the number that they went at, the costs and the implication to the tax, was a bit high. I do think that having been through two difficult contract negotiations with the teachers and being through a strike, that the district and the city really needs to heal. And that going through a budget fight and having a high number sent out to the voters and having that be rejected will lead to more conflict and more strife, and that is not what the city needs. The city and the district needs to heal. So early on, I came out and I thought that 7% increase to property taxes would be something that we could sell, we all could sell. The district, the parents, the staff could sell to voters. They came out within 8%. I understand why, and I will support, and I do support, the budget they put forward. Even though I disagreed with how, maybe some of the individual choices, there's a lot of good things in that budget, and I thought they did a good job.
Very good. Michael. Susan Marie, you were very instrumental in the fiscal year '19 school district budget. Your opportunity to speak to it.
Yes, I support the budget. It addresses the needs of both students and teachers. If you look at the district's budget website, you can see more of the slide presentations about the particulars of the budget. But there are components in the budget that support what teachers need to do their jobs well, as well as things that focus directly on students. And we made it a priority to try to approach the budget in ways that would cause as little harm or disruption to direct student experience as possible. And as Mike said, the entire framework was driven by the principles from the strategic plan, and that itself was the product of a robust community engagement process over a period of years. And it reflected the board's careful deliberation about how to support systemic change in ways the system can absorb and the community can afford. As I agree with what Mike said about this needs to be a year in which we can pass our budget. And to get down to 7% would have involved making more painful reductions. That would have been so controversial, I didn't think that would work. And going very high, also complications in other directions. So I thought it was a good compromise.
Okay. We'll continue on the subject of budgeting and dollars and cents for the district here, particularly the $39 million in capital improvements that are needed over the next decade. You're very aware of what is specifically needed. So as a school board member here, do you agree with that? And how do you generate the significant community support to get the city and its residents behind that $39 million price tag?
Well, through a lot of hard work and, again, broad conversations in the city about capital improvements, both, I mean, in the city more generally, because that super block downtown is also a factor in this. I think first, the community needs to understand that we have tens of millions of dollars in deferred maintenance. Anytime you go to a public event at Burlington High School, you can see how functionally inaccessible that building is to anybody with any degree of mobility impairment. It is hard to get from one end to the other in any timely fashion. Investing in capital improvements is good for everyone. Good quality schools, by which I mean good educational quality and good physical quality, is an asset for the city, for our economic base. So it's making our schools successful makes the city a more desirable place to live and work and raise children. And we are working with our Chittenden County legislators to increase the funds available to our schools. We've been working with local, our area legislators to introduce a bill that would exempt debt service and capital expenses from calculations of education spending, which could bring benefits back to us in the long run. And so we're working both in persuading here in town and working in Montpelier to try to set voter receptivity to supporting schools and changing, helping to influence the state framework for how capital costs are calculated and affect, how they're manipulated in how the state views our education spending.
Okay, very good. Mike, $39 million, it's a big price tag.
It is a big price tag. And I think there's two key components to a big price tag. And the first is trust. The public has to trust that giving that kind of money to the school board and the administration, that they're going to be responsible for it. A number of years ago, that trust wasn't there, right? The district did not know what was happening with the dollars, could not do basic budgeting. And so you can't ask unless you've built up that trust. And the district and the board have done a lot of work. It's not public, and it's not interesting, and it's boring, but it's there. And people who are watching, and I've been going to those school board meetings and watching, they've been taking care of the dollars and been fiscally responsible. So number one, the public has to trust, taxpayers have to trust. Number two, it's a story. You have to tell the story about why these dollars are needed. This is not, we're not putting in a sauna or a swimming pool. Tell the story of things like at Edmunds Elementary School, the gym that some of the kids use is a basement with padding against the wall and posts in the middle with a low ceiling. It's not a gym, it's a basement. And so when you tell stories about kids where their classroom is freezing cold and they have to wear jackets, how can you expect a kid to learn if they can't even sit comfortably in a classroom? So you look at the schools that we have in the district and the age and the fact that, as Susan Marie said, the deferred maintenance. Very easy to say, we'll fix it later, and that's just been going on for decades. So again, it's building that trust and telling the story. There are going to be some people who balk at the number, and that's fine. People who are look bottom line. But when you tell the story about the impact of not spending that money on the kids, I think it's a huge factor in having kids be successful in academics and social aspects that they have the facility in which to do that learning.
Very good. Thank you, Michael. Building trust, key to passing $39 million in capital improvements, Nicole.
Absolutely. I think, of course, our schools have to be physically safe and accessible for our students. And so many of these improvements and deferred maintenance are long overdue. There's absolutely no question about that. These things have to happen. But again, I go back to my question around transparency and trust, like you're saying. So for me, I have questions like, how were these figures arrived at for these numbers? Who provided the quotes? Is there a competitive RFP process going on for each of these projects? Who are the contractors? Who's consulting on energy efficiency for some of these issues? Have we reached out to local building commissioning companies like CX Associates, who's one of the premier building commissioning companies in the state of Vermont when we talk about issues like building envelopes for IAA? These are areas where we can tap into our local community businesses, resources, and I don't know if that's happening or not because, again, transparency. So if we want community support, I think having more transparency allows us to make a stronger case for why these improvements need to happen. And not only that, but how we can do them in the most efficient and community cooperative way so that the community knows we're being efficient, we're doing this in, we're using your money effectively, and this is how you can trust that we're doing this in the proper, following proper procedures to do this, get this done right.
Okay, very good. A reminder that our calls are available. If you have a question for any one of the candidates directly, you can go ahead and dial us directly at 862-3966. We'll go ahead and we'll step now to kind of a statewide basis here. And Mike, we'll begin with you here. What is your position on taking a statewide approach to budgeting for the costs of education, particularly as it relates to labor and benefits?
So I'm open for financial efficiency, and I think it's just, you know, well-known that if you can bundle more costs, you can get better rates. So the more people that would buy into healthcare, let's say, the more teachers that would buy into a healthcare plan, the better rates that you have. So I'm open to that as a possibility. What concerns me is our state's, state government's ability to execute. And we all have heard stories about state bureaucracies and not being able to execute. I was reading about Vital, which is doing the healthcare exchange, and how they've had a, just come through an awful audit. And this is millions of dollars that have gone through. The Vermont Health Connect. There are stories, the DMV, there's lots of stories. The state does great work, but can they execute to really save money? Or is it going to be a lot of red tape? I think that you have to, we'll have to look at what the actual proposal is. But I haven't seen that the state is really good at doing these big kinds of work where you're coordinating and you understand and you get all the information and all the stakeholders from across the state, lots of different flavors of school districts. Can they put that together? Financially, maybe. The ability to execute, I don't think that they've proven it.
Okay, very good. Nicole, your position on statewide funding for education?
So I totally disagree with taking a statewide approach to teacher contracts in any way, shape, or form. Each district has unique characteristics and challenges, including cost of living by county, that just makes a statewide contract completely infeasible. In addition, when you look at income inequality from, and economics from a 10,000-foot view, we need to support unions in general overall if you really want to fight for, you know, to battle income inequality because these are workers' rights. These are worker, union groups are fighting for people. It's not a, it's not corporate interest, it's the rights of workers. And honestly, this is really just a backdoor approach to create a right-to-work state in Vermont. So I totally disagree. This is just another form of union busting, and I do not support it in any way.
Susan Marie, your response to that?
You know, I think the devil is in the details. There is certainly, you know, I can see some benefits to statewide approaches to negotiations. There's potential economies of scale. I think there are potential negative effects on the power of local unions, and I do believe that public sector unions are a really important force in American work-life at the moment and definitely deserve protection and attention. It's also true that Burlington and also Winuski, although on a smaller scale, have needs that are very, very different from much of the rest of the state. And I worry that statewide approach is not really going to enable local communities to tailor solutions to the combination of economics and pedagogy and employment conditions that any given contract resolves. Now, in some ways, if some things could move to the state level and give us more time to work out local control of important local issues, maybe that could work. But again, the devil would be in the details.
Very good. We are running out of time here, so we'll come to some of the final questions here before we ask our candidates to give a final statement. Our last question here is, and we'll start with Nicole. Do you support the governor's no new taxes and no new fees approach?
No. I actually think this position is a fallacy. The governor's raided the state education fund and just passed the tax burden down to the local level so he can claim he's not raising taxes. So frankly, I think that position is completely dishonest of him. I think many issues have been brought to the legislators' attention, such as the arbitrary waiting amounts we have for EL students and students in poverty. So we're trying to find ways to make our current funding formula work. But, you know, this position that he has and really this overall position that's really an attempt to defund public education is just not feasible nor accurate nor truthful. You know, we're looking at some things now which take an income-tax-based approach to education funding. But even today, Jack Hoffman, who's a senior policy analyst at the Public Assets Institute, came out and said, you know, this is going to be a worse situation than we're already in because this, there's no flexibility in an income-based, an income-tax-based policy. There's no income sensitivity. And if you spend over the amount that's prescribed, which 85% of school districts do, that extra amount is going to come on the backs of property taxes, which will increase at a higher rate than they already do.
Okay, thank you. Michael, your position on the governor's position of no new taxes or fees?
So I think that the governor has a nice buzz phrase, and I think that it plays well in some areas. But like you say, one of our favorite phrases is, "The devil's in the details." Just to say that, I think, is not enough, that there's more nuance and districts have needs, that they should be able to make those decisions. If the voters of Burlington decide that they want to increase the budget for a school district, why should the governor get to veto that? Governor gets to veto plenty. He doesn't necessarily get to veto everything that happens in that state. So I think, I'm a big believer in local control. That's one of the things I love about Burlington. People are engaged and people want to be involved with what's going on. They're not passive. They get engaged, let them make the decision. I think there are opportunities to adjust how finances are done in the state. Yesterday, I went with Mayor Weinberger and some other PTO leaders to the state Capitol advocating to change one of those factors to allow us to use more municipal funds within the district, to allow the district to deliver noneducational expenses, which is currently not allowed by the Agency of Education. So there are opportunities to tweak it, but I don't think that the governor gets to tell us what to do at a local level.
All right. And Susan Marie, your position on the governor's no new taxes or fees pledge?
Yes, well, at the risk of indistinguishing myself from Mike here, I, you know, I think you're right. When the governor says no new taxes, it's an indirect way of making choices at the state level that just kick decisions down to local boards that really make the issue of no new taxes or fees very unclear for the rest of us. And that's not fair. The way we've been funding education in Vermont has been regressive. The tax burden on the very highest-earning Vermonters has not gone up. The lower rate earners have been paying greater percentage of their taxes, percentage of their income in taxes proportionately. And we need, there's a lot that needs reforming about education spending in the state.
Okay, very good. Well, we are out of time here, so at this point, we will ask the candidates to give their closing statements, and we'll ask each of you to keep it to 30 seconds for time purposes. Nicole, we'll begin with you.
Sure. I'd like to thank you, Matt, and Channel 17 for holding this forum, for not only our ward, but for all the other wards in Burlington. I think school board elections don't get the attention that they deserve. Really running a school district is a very important part of the public process, and our kids deserve better. Public education is under attack in this country, and we really need to give a lot of focus to what's going on in our public school districts, both from, you know, an educational standpoint, a school safety standpoint, as we've just seen what's happened this week across the country. And I think it's important to take a holistic look at what's happening in our districts. And we need more transparency, more oversight, and more people getting involved in the process. So I really hope to do that.
Thank you, Nicole. Susan Marie, your final statement.
You know, it's been a tumultuous year in the district, and this election is not a referendum on the past year or the entire board. It's a referendum for Ward Five on who do you want representing you. And I think my experience on the board, my calmness under pressure, my ability to constantly be pushing the board to develop a reflective process for getting better at having a culture of learning and a culture of respect, and my ability to work with every single other commissioner on the board, no matter their temperament nor their political or educational philosophy, makes me an effective representative for our ward.
Very good. And Michael, your final comments. And Michael, your final comments?
So as you've heard tonight, the three of us, we're not that far off. So how do you decide? I think that you look at past actions. And I'm sorry, Susan Marie, you say this is not a referendum on the board. The reason why I'm running is because of the decisions that the board made, and you voted with the board. You voted to impose working conditions on teachers. You have voted to support the superintendent. So I do think this is a referendum on the board, and that's why a lot of current board members are no longer running. So I think you look at our past actions, you look at our decisions, and that's how you judge us.
Very good. I'd like to thank all three candidates for joining us here this evening and for their, putting their names on the ballot. It takes a lot to actually be willing to put your name on a ballot, go door-to-door to try to draw consensus among your fellow citizens here in the city, and then to face the music, so to speak, come Election Day. A reminder that Tuesday, March 6th, is Election Day. We encourage you all to go out to the polls. Democracy only occurs when people go out and vote. And we invite you to join us on Tuesday, March 6th, for complete election results here on Channel 17. For all of us at Town Meeting Television, thank you for joining us. Good night. Hello and welcome to Channel 17's Town Meeting Television. Once again, we continue with our Burlington School Board Live Candidate Forums. I'm your moderator, Matt Kelly. We do have a programming note to note. Claire Wool from Ward 6 could not be with us this evening, so we will not be doing a Ward 6 interview. Also, Stephanie Segino, while she is listed on the ballot, has decided not to run, so Claire Wool will be running unopposed for Ward 6. However, we are moving to Ward 7, and we are pleased to be joined by Monica Ivanicic. She is running for this position, her first time running for school board, and we're welcoming her this evening. Monica, it's a great opportunity for you to have an opening statement to talk about why you're running and what qualifies you to run for school board.
Great, thank you, Matt. My name is Monica, and I see there's a big need for positive change on the school board in Burlington, and especially for my district in Ward 7, for some positive change there. I am a parent in the school district. I have a daughter in the 4th grade at the Integrative Arts Academy, and a husband that works at Champlain School as a para educator. I work at UVM in the Chemistry Department as an Instrument Specialist, and there I deal with students on a daily basis. I feel like I've never really left school, because I proceeded to get my PhD degree in biochemistry and biophysics, and then I pretty much have worked in the university setting the rest of my life. Between, so I have a lot of connections in the community, from my colleagues and students at UVM, to parents in, at the Magnet Schools mostly, and then my neighbors in the Village Green neighborhood in the New North End. So with my educational experience and my connection to a lot of different people in this community, I think I'd be an excellent candidate for Ward 7 School Commissioner.
Wonderful. What is your public education philosophy? I mean, uh, what do you believe the purpose of public education to be?
So I strongly and firmly believe that education is a basic human right, and that it is very important to a thriving society. It is not only a way for children to read, to learn reading, writing, and math, but it is a way for them to become contributing members of society. So I'm a strong believer in, uh, public education, that everybody should be well-educated. And I believe that a well-educated public makes informed decisions and builds a community in which people are engaged and contribute to the general well-being of the overpop, of our population. And then I also believe that a strong education is a means to solving many societal ills, such as overpopulation, crime, teenage pregnancy, opioid and drug abuse, and family disintegration, poverty, homelessness. So I believe through education, we can build a better community and better society.
Okay. A reminder that this is a live call-in show, so if you have a question for Monica about the state of education in Burlington, you can call in and ask her directly at 862-3966. Again, that's 862-3966. Monica, prior to coming on here, we had a brief discussion. You're very passionate about serving underserved communities in this role. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, so before my daughter went to the Integrative Arts Academy, she was at the Sustainability Academy for just over three years. And there I was very involved in the PTO. But one thing I noticed is that PTO is made up mostly of middle-class families. And I saw that as a concern, because it didn't reflect the makeup of the school at the Sustainability Academy and throughout the district. We have a lot of new American families and families from challenged socioeconomic status. And so I became interested in trying to make connections, build bridges with these families. And together with three other parents and the principal at the Sustainability Academy, we formed a Diversity and Inclusivity Committee. And we reached out to the new American families and organized meetings with the different groups. Like, we had meetings with the Bhutanese Nepali groups, and then we had meetings with the Somali Meemeh families. The Bhutanese Nepali interaction culminated in a Bhutanese Nepali Information Night back in November, in which they had a slideshow presentation of, like, where they're coming from and why they ended up in Burlington. And that was intermixed with some culture, some food. They brought food to share with us, and dancing. And the whole SA community, it was a well-attended event, and we learned a lot from these people that we lived with on a day-to-day basis in our community. And we are preparing to do another event with the Somali Meemeh families in March. And so by reaching out to these people, we hope that we get them more integrated into our schools and our district.
So taking that approach, how do you think that that is going to translate on the school board? There's been a lot of dissension, name-calling, if you will, on that school board. Does it operate as a functional body today? And how do you think your candidacy can move that needle forward, so to speak?
Uh, well, I guess I don't want to necessarily talk specifically about the current school board, but just in general, that, yes, it is supposed to be a functioning governing body that oversees the superintendent and the school districts, and how our schools perform in this district. And to build a better, you know, I, I vouch to be, uh, come to these meetings well-prepared and to share what I've learned and for, for the meeting that was going to happen with my co-schoolboard members and the community that's present. And so that way, I kind of want to build a positive image and, you know, we're, we're examples to the community as to what we want happening at our schools. And hopefully, treat each other with dignity and, and, you know, be respected in the community, because school board members do volunteer a lot of their time for meetings and for researching the subject at hand. And so this is just a good deed to the community.
Wonderful. We heard in our last dialogue with Keith Pillsbury, the challenge of trying to create a wonderful learning environment with the dollars and cents. And unfortunately, the community is probably most concerned about the dollars and cents. So let's speak about money first, if we can. Do you support the fiscal '19 school district budget and its priorities?
Yes, I do support the district budget and its priorities. So we are asking for a 7.99% increase in property taxes. 7.2% of that is just because essentially, in my view, that the state mismanaged the education fund. And so, um, so we're in that big, a big deficit hole because of various things that happened on the state level. And so we need to make up for it as taxpayers. And so only 0.8% of that is for new programs in the schools. And so, um, so yes, I'm a proponent of the 8% tax increase, and I think our schools are worth investing in.
And we'll bring that to the state level. The governor has said no new taxes, no new fees. And there's also been a statewide push for budgeting the costs of education, particularly as it relates to, um, uh, labor and benefits. Can you speak to your position about the governor's statement, no new taxes and fees, and the governor's position of a statewide approach to funding education?
Um, so I'm against the governor's position on new taxes and fees. I think that the schools are worth investing in. I think he is kind of riding on the backs of this wave that's sweeping the nation, where, um, the Tea Party Republicans and the rich, such as Koch Brothers, are making teachers look bad and trying to pit the community against teachers, because they have an easy government job. And so I think here in Vermont, we're a little bit insulated against that. But I think we still need to educate each other and convince each other that schools are worth investing, because, investing in, because it will help our economy and our society as a whole in the long run, and our city of Burlington.
Okay. $39 million in capital, oh, you, you want to add?
I have not answered your question about the statewide approach.
Thank you.
And I believe that our schools need to be under local control for our children to receive a high-quality education. And so I'm against the statewide approach to budgeting the cost of labor and benefits, since the decision pertaining to this would be out of our hands of the local school board, and it would be in the hands of Montpelier legislators. So a statewide contract would be probably, most likely, be fought by the teachers' union, because it takes the power of negotiations out of the picture. And I think it's not a likely thing that it would happen in the state. I believe also the teachers would be against it, because of essentially negotiations and likely negative impacts to their salary. As a school board candidate, I'm here to represent our schools in becoming the best that they can be for our children and our community. And to do this effectively, we need local control of our budget and good relations with our teachers.
Very good, thank you. $39 million in capital improvements over the next decade. That's a pretty significant number. You say that you're committed to providing quality education. Can you speak to that number and how that relates?
Um, so that's a big number. But a lot of our schools are in desperate need of repair. And aside from renovation or rebuilding the high school, I don't think that money comes close to doing anything with the high school at this point. So just like with your home, for every year that the buildings are not maintained, the cost of maintaining these in the future becomes larger and larger. And so for our children to receive a proper education, they need to be attending schools that aren't falling apart, and schools that can be heated in the winter and cooled in the warmer months, because now we've got, we're getting more warmer months, like in the fall, where the schools end up being hot. Recently, what, a couple months ago in Baltimore, it was so cold out, you saw pictures of kids in, sitting in school with their coat jackets and gloves on, because it was so cold inside their schools. So how can a child learn, you know, in that kind of environment? So whether or not we pay for maintaining our schools from the education fund, I think that is a matter of further debate. So schools are municipal buildings, and perhaps the funds to maintain the actual buildings should come for, from municipal funds.
Hmm, okay. About half a million dollars are going to be, uh, cut from the administrative budget, proposed cuts. What are your thoughts on that?
Um, so I think the district office has done a pretty good job of cutting, uh, cutting their budget. I think in this year, they cut 0.600,000 out of their budget. And they're proposing further cuts. I'm a little bit concerned about these. From a, um, school board budget discussion meeting back in January, these cuts, the 540,000, some of that is going to be, they're going to get rid of a full-time painter position, a grounds foreman position. And so those kind of jobs, I think, can be taken care of with current staff, likely, or they wouldn't be looking into these cuts. And another position was a principal substitute, and I was not aware that we pay for a full-time principal substitute. So perhaps that's part of that. One position that I am concerned about is that of the Senior Director of Infrastructure and Technology, since this person not only provides software, hardware, and tech support, but they're also oversee the district's technology program, like how schools and teachers use technology. And I think that's, you know, important, to keep abreast of how we educate our children with technology, which is improving on a, by-minute basis, essentially. But I think we do need to be vigilant of overspending and seeing where we can save, save money.
And so to that end, do you believe that the, they're dedicating enough resources to the achievement gap and to the policies aimed at improving educational outcomes?
So, no, Matt. I don't think that we are spending enough money towards bridging the achievement gap. So in some of the most recent budget discussions, they've listed several items that essentially pertain to bridging the achievement gap, in my opinion. And some of these positions are like EL teachers in all three levels, elementary, middle, and high school, social workers, implementation of the use of restorative practices, trauma training for educational staff, and achievement gap professional development. I don't know how much of that we can afford to pay our teachers. So that's just to name a few. Our district has made good effort in preserving a lot of the EL teachers and also prioritizing multilingual liaisons. We are losing federal money for these liaisons, but I think that's one of the number-one things that we are, are putting back into our budget, that, of the, I believe, 0.8%. So we're also very good at increasing social, or I would like to see social-emotional supports being increased in the district. So this year's budget, as I mentioned before, includes only an increase of 0.8%. And I don't believe that that is enough to boldly attack the achievement gap. And so one of the big underlying problems is, um, children living in poverty and suffering from trauma. And only, the schools can only do so much with these kind of children. So I'm a big proponent of serving breakfast in the classroom after the bell. So currently, at least at the elementary schools, students can come at 7:45 and get breakfast, and then, um, most schools, I think, the bell rings at 8:10, and they need to get into the classroom. But I think a lot of the socioeconomically-challenged children show up last minute, and they haven't had a bite to eat. And so it's difficult for them to focus on their schoolwork when they have belly, hungry bellies. And Hunger Free Vermont provides a lot of this information, where studies have been done, that if you give children a breakfast, and they can kind of socialize with their peers for 10 or 15 minutes at the beginning of the school day, it increases their participation. They can focus better, they become more engaged, they have better concentration, alertness, comprehension, memory, and retained learning. And so students that, who eat a healthy breakfast are more likely to participate in class, perform better socially, and most importantly, have higher academic achievement. So as a school board member, I will be promoting having breakfast in the classroom at all elementary schools as a first step to bridging the achievement gap.
Wonderful. We just have a few minutes left, Monica, so if there's anything else that we didn't discuss here, now would be the opportunity for you to make a closing statement to address some of those topics.
So, um, I think that it'll be a great opportunity for me to be on the school board, that I'm very pro-education, pro-teacher, and I believe that that attitude will enhance our children's learning, and it'll be, you know, by supporting the educational staff that we will create a really great environment for our children in school. So there's benefits to that. I- My platform is kind of building collaboration. So collaboration between all stakeholders involved, such as the superintendent, the school board, the educational staff, and the community at large. And by increasing participation, one of my goals would be to increase participation, like get everyone to the polls and vote or get their opinions at the school board meetings. I think that we could build a more equitable and just system. And also, I am for fiscal responsibility, knowing where our dollars go, being aware of our line item budget and kind of overviewing where we could cut, where we could add, and then being transparent to the community because we want to hear the voices of the community. I think that makes the democratic process more successful by having everyone involved. And then I'll kind of end with inclusivity and diversity. So making sure that our schools are challenging enough for the high achievers and then at the same time, not leaving behind our children of lower socioeconomic status and our new American families and also children with disabilities to make sure everybody's included in the process and so that we can build a great, successful school system.
Wonderful. Monica, thank you so much for joining us here this evening and for your candidacy. Once again, it takes a lot to actually put your name on a ballot, to be willing to go door to door and draw consensus among your fellow neighbors and citizens. And so we thank all the candidates for their candidacy and we wish them all the best of luck on Tuesday, March 6. A reminder to join us for election night coverage beginning here at 7 o'clock on Channel 17. For all of us at Town Meeting Television, I'm Matt Kelly. Thank you for joining us. Good night. Hello and welcome to Channel 17's Town Meeting Television, live event coverage of candidate forums. Tonight, we continue with school board interviews of candidates. Right now, Ward 8's Keith Pillsbury. Keith, welcome to the show and thank you for your service to the city of Burlington. The forum this evening is fairly straightforward. We've provided all candidates with a list of questions prior to the event so they know what will be asked. We don't engage in gotcha journalism here at Channel 17. So Keith, why don't you take two minutes to go ahead and state why you are running for reelection and why you believe you're an ideal candidate for school board?
I don't know about the ideal part. But I really, first of all, before I start talking, I want to talk about, I believe it's an honor to serve your neighbors. And I want to make sure I say that because oftentimes, I forget to say that at the end. I've had the privilege of serving the residents of Ward 8 as your ward clerk. And before we were redistricted out of Ward 1, I served the Ward 1 constituents, my neighbors, for 21 years on the Burlington School Board. It was always an honor. I tried not to take advantage of the privilege. I felt that it was important to listen, to hear people. And then they expected me to make up my mind based upon what I heard and based upon my best judgment. And I always respected that of them. And they re-elected me 11 times. And I feel very fortunate that I had a ward that supported every budget recommendation that I made. I think that that made me feel like I was truly representing the people that were electing me. And I intend to do that in Ward 8. I have tried to listen to the Ward 8 constituents. There seems to be a lot of concern about the Burlington School District right now. In my ward, I'm hearing things about such things as communication issues and concerns, leadership issues and concerns. And another most frequent comment is the teachers need to be treated better. And I feel as an incoming board member, those are some things that I want to work on. Better communication between the board, the superintendent, and the teachers and the community. There needs to be a partnership between all of these stockholder, I guess they use the word "stockbrokers" or whatever they are. But basically, we're all involved. We want the best for our children. And I think that one of the reasons that I'm running for the school board is that I believe we need to take care of our children to the best of our ability within our resources. We haven't done a very good job with our assets in this city, Memorial Auditorium, the Burlington High School, and the water, all of that. But I think we need to do a better job making sure that our children get all of the opportunities that we can afford to make sure that their future and Burlington's future is in good hands.
Wonderful. Thank you, Keith. A reminder that this is a call-in show. So if you do have a question for Keith directly, you can call in and pose that question to him directly at 862-3966. That number again, 862-3966. Keith, we'll go right to the numbers here. Do you support the Burlington School District's proposed fiscal year '19 budget and its priorities?
Well, the budget's already a sort of a fait accompli. And coming out against it as a candidate doesn't make a lot of sense. I may not agree with some of the priorities in the budget. But, you know, basically what we're saying is it's a 0.8% increase in the amount of money that we're getting. The total budget is going down. That's because the grants and extra revenues that we receive is going down. But if you look at the general operating budget, it's only going up by, if I can read their figures right, $383,000. So I read this, and I'm trying to read it and digest it. There seems to be a lot of gobbledygook and a mixture of things. But what I can really figure out in it is that we're not adding to the budget by a whole lot. And the whole emphasis on all of this, the tax increase and amount, is really the fact of how the state has decided to fund education. But I must remind people, before they had this Act 60 and 68, Burlington could barely pass a budget. And I was on a board when we lost budget after budget after budget, despite the hard work we put into talking about it and putting it together. And when Act 60 came along and there was income sensitivity and close to 70% of our residents were able to get a rebate on the property tax, there was much more of a willingness to support us. I think also because the information that we were passing out as a very activist board at that time made it so that they felt confident that we could, that we were telling what we needed to happen. And we had a lot of things needed to be done. New Americans, renovation of our buildings, new ways of making sure that we worked on improving the ability of our students to learn and the achievement of our students. There was a lot that the board took on. And I think that the last couple of years, the board has continued to work on those. It's sort of the tradition of the Burlington School Board, to work on achievement of its students, work on renovation of its buildings, its assets, to work on ways, coming up with ways that really meet the needs of all of our students, to make sure that they have the opportunities to learn and that they have a challenging educational opportunity in Burlington. Our Burlington schools are some of the, they are the most diverse in this state and they have some of the most challenging situations. And I don't know that we really appreciate the work of our teachers and the work that goes into the quality of our students as they leave. Whenever I go out to a restaurant or meet students who are serving me, I find, I could tell the Burlington student right off. And I'm very proud of the products that we produce in Burlington. The children who are the result of all our work in Burlington. And that's why I say they are a very valuable asset to our community. And we need to make sure that they have the skills and the knowledge to continue in our community. And I would love to have them stay in Vermont because we really need their skills and knowledge.
Wonderful. And then this brings up a pretty major topic here as it goes back to the state and how they fund education. The governor has said no new taxes, no new fees. He's also encouraged a statewide approach to budgeting, particularly as it relates to labor and benefits. Can you speak to those issues and your position?
Well, Burlington has unique challenges. It's old buildings. It has unique challenges in that we are a community that provides a lot of various nonprofit services. We are a community where people come because we have those services. And they come with children. And the schools take in those children and do serve those children. And I don't think the state really has ever understood the job that our teachers in our community is trying to do to make sure that all of our children have a good start in life. And so the Burlington School Board has constantly been complained about by the legislature and by various governors about our budgets are too high, our budgets are this or that. But no other district has the kind of challenges that Burlington has. And it seems disingenuous of the governor to talk about, you know, making sure that there are cuts in education when we have greater needs. We're the one that receives a lot of the new Americans. We're the ones that receives the families who are in different cult situations. We are the ones that, families who need to be near the courthouse because of particular issues with the law. We work with their children. And so the governor's idea about sort of holding the line and reducing the number of staff, while it might be possible in other communities, one of the reasons that we need to have the staff load, which really isn't as high as people think, is really as low as people think it is, based upon the fact that we have so many different challenging needs. And our job as educators, our teachers and our leaders in our schools have been trying to make sure that every child gets the opportunity to learn. And it's very hard to learn in a classroom if there are certain children who aren't helped with emotional upsets or learning disabilities or language difficulties. We need those adults to help them.
Okay, very good. We're going to continue on the dollars and cents, if you will, of today's discussion.
You know, I really want to talk about education. You know, education costs money. Basically, it does. One of the things I realized, I looked at the district's facts here, and all of this is about the tax increase. I don't know what we're, I can't tell from the budget what it is we're actually doing for our children. What's the class size? What kind of programs are we providing for our children? What are our children, I don't even know how our children are doing from this report here. You know, their test scores, they talk. I heard the superintendent rant on about our test scores are not as good in some schools. And I'm thinking, well, first of all, I don't believe that test scores is the only way of measuring how well our students do. We had students in some of our schools before we made some changes that barely made it to the middle school and they definitely didn't make it to the high school. And our whole goal is to make them feel, have confidence and to have some skills so that we can move them into areas where they can feel good and confident and have the opportunity to learn. And I don't think that necessarily every child needs to be on a track for higher education or college. I think our children need to be given that idea that they could go to college, but there are some children who learn very differently and with their hands. And I, who purchase a lot of services and maintenance of our house, I know that we are not getting a lot of young people that are going into the kind of vocations that we really need to help in the service, in the industry of which we used to call blue-collar workers, but they are the workers that work on our cars, that need computer skills. They're workers that work on our plumbing and electricity. And to me, a school district helps a child figure out what it is that they're good at and gets those opportunities for them. I think this whole, I don't know what it's called in jargon, but it's a personal learning plan where the student thinks about their skills, their strengths, their interests. And so they are, they're helped to move into the areas where they're not having the force to take a language or English course or something, if they're better working with their hands. And to me, that's what a school district does. You make sure that your children all feel good and confident and that they get the background they need to become a successful citizen. And that's sort of the philosophy of my education. If we're trying to educate our students, they should become good citizens in this country or in this city because they feel good about themselves. They feel that they have some value and worth. And to me, that's what a good educational system does. So, you know, we can talk about money. It does cost money. But, you know, people get all caught up in that. But I want to know, what's the outcome? What does it buy? What do I get? And I'm obviously going to support this budget, but I'm buying a pig in a polka, I think. I don't know what it's going to do for our kids. And that, to me, is the bottom line. I think we don't have a school, we haven't had a board this year. Every year, boards are different. But when they focus on the bottom line and the money and don't talk about what we're doing for children, then I think people don't have confidence that we're actually educating children. They just worry, they hear the conflicts, and we've had that. And I think hopefully, our new board will take a better idea that we are going to make sure that our children get the skills and the learning they need and that we support the people who are going to do that so that they feel motivated and highly respected and that they are working with the future of our city.
So to that end, let's continue along that, if you will. Do you think enough resources are being dedicated to the achievement gap? The district has adopted equity policies that are aimed at increasing...
We've always had that. We've always had that.
Do you think that there are enough resources being...
That is what's making me worry because I don't know what's in this budget. We have a surplus of 1.1 million, almost, and we had one last year. I'm thinking, how many pair educators didn't get hired for that child in kindergarten or first grade who was having an upset and throwing a desk in a room that was upsetting the whole, I've heard too many rumors about this, upsetting the whole class. How many children did not get what they needed and they were graduated anyway? Or how many children dropped out? I don't know what the dropout rate is that they, you know, they went, they just sort of left. That's the kind of thing that I want to know, if there are resources. When I go into schools, I see large class sizes, which may or may not be okay, depending on the makeup of that class. I know that if you have a lot of challenges in a class, that large number is not a good number for the teacher to manage. So I don't know about class sizes. I don't know about the number of, are all the children being served? Are their needs being met? Do we have the program? I think at the high school, we may need some programs for children who have, you know, if you are coming from a family that's had some issues regarding the law or incarceration or mental illness or drug addiction, there are certain ways, there are certain issues that child brings to school. Do we have the programs that make that child be able to cope and at the same time, feel good and learn?
So on that, cuts have real-time consequences.
Right.
And as a matter of fact, about $540,000 are proposed to be cut from the district administrative budget. What are your positions on that? And what is that going to do to outcomes as well?
First of all, I don't know what that is. First of all, I heard the person who's in charge of technology, director of technology, is retiring. But we have really invested a lot of money in technology in all of our schools. I don't know how that job is going to be divvied up and who's doing it. But you certainly want a good, you want somebody making sure the technology is working, as you know here. If it doesn't work, you know, the kids, it's a lot of wasted time for children in their learning. So I don't know. I do know that in some of the departments, there is twice the number of people in that department than there were when I left the board four years ago. And so I'm thinking, okay, so what's going on? And I also know that there are a huge number of teacher complaints. I forgot what the word is now. They have, they've given in, and they're not being tended to. So, you know, when that happened before, when we had a superintendent that was not very, there was problems with communication between the teachers' union and superintendent. And we, as a board, actually, as a board member, I've let go four people. We got a new superintendent in. He sat down with the union leadership and resolved all of those grievances, is the word I'm looking at. I hear we have a tremendous number of grievances and they're not being dealt with. That's a bad sign in a district when you have teachers focusing on their grievances rather than focusing on doing the job in the classroom, which I'm not saying that, it's just too much to worry about that and to do their job and have a smile on your face and work with every one of those children. And I think... And I think we, I have no clue right now, when he talks about that, what the impact is going to be on our central office, but one of the things I know, it can be more efficient. And if there's grievances piling up in the central office, there's issues of communication and working together in our district, which is not a positive sign.
Okay. Keith, very passionate, obviously, and if you have questions for him directly, the number to call in is 862-3966. Again, 862-3966. Keith, you are very passionate here, so I'm going to just go a little bit off-script here. What do you see, the challenges, day one, for you, if you are elected and go on board?
I've got a lot to learn. I don't know what's going on, and I stepped down because people had a different direction they wanted to go, and so I went off traveling. I've been traveling all over the world, and I, and I sort of have not been involved. I said, okay, go about doing your thing. But when I came home from Egypt, end of September, and there was a strike, I said, this is it. I just really got back involved in it. You know, if it gets to that point, then you know that something's broken down. And I know I wasn't getting a lot of information. Actually, I voted against that. I hope you'll ask me about that bond, capital bond. I voted against it last year, because we seem to not have any memory. We put money into, we put a lot of money into Sustainability Academy, into Flynn School, into Smith School, and they're back on the list, and we're going to fix them some more. And I'm thinking, our biggest need is the Burlington High School. I can't believe that they just went with all these other little things, they didn't really get to the big issue of Burlington High School. Issue of, first of all, security, there's 39 different doors, and I, you know, that, I don't want to get ser, I don't want to get pessimistic, but we should be concerned about security at the high school. I know we have, I know we have video at each of the doors, but there's 39 doors there, we have accessibility issues, and more of our children are having issues about being able to get in and out, going around our buildings, we need to get the, it's sort of like a California campus built in Burlington. I never did understand why that was. We have air, air quality issues, we have energy issues, our classrooms are too small, they're dingy, and we're working on building a, an entrance to Champlain Elementary School, which may be a good idea, but I'm thinking, why are we not going to where the major issue is, the Burlington High School? And I don't know why we're putting over $3 to $4 million into the central office. I think that central office building ought to be sold to UVM, because they could use that space for more university housing for our students, which is impacting my, my district. 4,000 students are not being housed by UVM, and that's impacting the neighborhood around there. And anytime that a family in my district decides that schools are not serving their child, they're going to be able to sell their house quickly to landlords who are willing to pay a very top price, and we lose another family, and we lose a neighborhood. So it's very important that we have good schools, a good reputation, that we tell the story of what our schools are actually doing, rather than have this negative thing, this conflict with, I don't know, superintendent and people calling each other racist on the board, and that having a conflict with teachers and the strike and the pair educators. This is not the way you run a, you run a district that has the, that creates confidence in its citizens and in confidence in those families who might want to move to Burlington because we have a fabulous school system, but we certainly aren't advertising that, we're not getting that reputation out there, because we're doing these other fights that I think is affecting the way people perceive our system.
Okay. Keith, is there anything that we didn't discuss here today that you'd like to discuss before we wrap up?
Well, there's, I wanted to talk about this, you know, the central administration, the $13, yeah, the, well, I'm thinking, yeah, the central administration office building. I think part of it is they're building, they want to build preschool of classrooms, okay? We were supporting preschools, or private preschools, I don't know, are we taking over more of the preschools? It seems like, you know, we were, we were able to give state money to preschool licensed teachers to, to help those preschools. I don't know if it's a conflict between private business and the city taking over the preschools. And if we're getting, if we're getting rid of the preschools out of the central office, which I can't, for me, life for me, tell me one way or the other, we are, that triple E that central office had was fabulous. They were doing a great job, and I can understand why they need to have more preschool classrooms, and I like that idea. And if we're going to build that, one of the schools in the north end, and one of, and at Champlain, the south end, let's get rid of the central office and put the central office in a, in a situation where they, we can, we can hold their expansion by giving them a smaller space.
And $11 million for what, four classrooms?
I'm not sure what that is. I don't know exactly how much, that $11 million, that's a new number, I heard. I didn't think it was quite that high. But, you know, four on, four on one school and four on another school, I don't know, but why so many more classrooms? We did have some preschools in, out at, we used to alternate between Flynn and Smith, I think, and there was one at SA, and then we had the triple E at, at central office. But this is, I don't think the community is, we've even heard about this in the community. So it's, again, it's like, it's like somebody from top down is telling board members, who actually, who actually are the persons, the people who are the ones who hire, evaluate, and set the goals for the superintendent, not the other way around. And I think we need to have a much more of an activist school board, where they're involved in the decisions, and not being told, this is how it's going to be. I'm not used to, being of a moderate, I'm used to town meetings where we have discussions, where we discuss, we debate, and it seems now that that's not happening.
And so wrap up our conversation here today. Try to nutshell it all together as to why your candidacy can help solve some of these questions.
Well, Ward 8 needs a voice. We haven't had a voice since September. Our, our school board representative had to move out of the district, so it didn't seem like anybody else wanted, there were others, there were two other former board members, they, for various reasons, weren't interested or willing. So I'm going to step up and do the best I can, and listen to people first, make my decisions, but obviously, the one thing I can guarantee you is I care about these Burlington kids. I don't have any self-interest, I don't have any children in my, in my, in the schools that my, and you know what? If my taxes go up, that's the way it'll be, I probably will get a rebate, I don't know. It depends on my, where my income is. We're both retired, my wife and I are both retired. But the one thing that I want to make sure is that no child, no child is, has any, is missed opportunity for learning if we can provide it.
Very good. Keith, thank you for your passion. It's wonderful to have such a candidate who's very committed to Burlington and its students. A reminder, election day is Tuesday, March 6th. Democracy only occurs when you, the electorate, go to the polls and let your voice be heard. Once again, we'd like to thank all the candidates for coming in this evening and being willing to share their views, and also for being willing to put their name on a ballot, to go door to door and draw consensus among their fellow citizens. For all of us here at Channel 17, I'm Matt Kelly. Thank you for joining us. Good night.